Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation by Commissioner Mark Evans.
Morning.
Morning.
You can go to the next slide. So, the Atlanta Regional Census Center is responsible for conducting the Census in seven states, which are on the slideshow there, and North Carolina is included in those seven. Next slide. It set up seven offices across the state. Allegheny County falls under the Winston-Salem area Census Office. Next slide. First census was conducted in 1790 by U.S. Marshals who actually rode on horseback to everyone's home. Next slide. So, as you all know, the Census is about power and money. It determines how the government gives away over $675 billion back to the states each year. And as you know, we have a lot of needs in our state, including here in this county, but the money does not follow the needs, it follows the count of the people. The more people we count, the more federal tax dollars the state, county, and town gets back. It's also about political power. Next slide. It determines, as you know, how many congressional seats we get, but it also, the data is used by the state legislature to draw congressional districts, and sometimes it's even used locally for fire districts, school districts, voting precincts. Ten years ago, we had 13 seats, we did not lose a seat, did not gain a seat here in North Carolina. The only way you can gain a seat is for another state to lose a seat. Last time Texas picked up four additional seats, and they're expected to pick up six this time, and California is expected to lose a seat or two. So, since the last census, in 2010, there's been 2 million people moved to North Carolina, and that's about the equivalent of the entire population of Nebraska. So, we expect to pick up additional seat, if not addition, if not two. So, that's why we're working really hard across the state to count as many people as possible. Next slide, please. So, in 2010, 76% of North Carolinians responded, in the initial response rate before they went out and started knocking on doors. Our goal this time is 82%. See, Allegheny County had a 78% response rate 10 years ago, so it was actually higher than the state average by 2%. Next slide. So, we have set our slogan for this census is, "The goal of 2020 census is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place." Next slide. So, the governor, besides setting the goal of 82% initial response rate, has also asked each county to assemble a complete count committee. We also have a state complete count commission that is working on developing, that will be, that's been pushing the messages across the state about the importance of this census. And each county has been asked to assemble a complete count committee, which is made up of trusted, which is in your community, that people in Allegheny County knows and trusts, to help develop an outreach plan, or a marketing campaign, or promotional campaign, whatever term you want to use, but that's the purpose of it. And also, these complete count committees are focused on hard-to-count populations. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, there you go. So, you know, from previous censuses, there are certain groups that are harder to count than others, that do not respond at rate, they respond with lesser rate than other groups. So, some of these are, well, first of all, children under the age of five were the biggest group that was undercounted. For some reason, people just don't remember to add their toddler to the census form. So, we're working with Smart Start, Head Start, and groups that work with young people of that age to push the word out to the daycare centers to remind their clients to include their children under age five on the form. Veterans is another group that's hard to reach, people with disabilities, people with limited English proficiency, and of course, the Latino workers that are here in North Carolina will probably be undercounted as well. So, we're doing everything we can to try to reach them, to let them know that the census is confidential. Senior citizens is another group that we want to reach out to through Mills on Wheels and other seniors groups. Just two weeks ago, I met with a seniors group at Piney Creek at the Turkey Knob Community Center and gave them similar presentation. Glade Creek was spoken to last week, seniors group. Next slide, please. We could, we skipped that. Next slide. The biggest reason people do not respond, they don't want the government knowing that, they say it's none of the government's business, but what they don't understand is the government already knows about them through their tax records. All we're asking is 10 questions on this census form. It'll take about 10 minutes to fill it out. Everybody in the U.S. Census Bureau is sworn for life to confidentiality, to never reveal any personal identifying information such as your name, your birth date, your address. All that is protected. But the questions are just going to be age, race, gender, and ethnicity, how many people live in the house. If we even accidentally give up some private information, even by accident, we can be fined $250,000 and put in prison for five years. So, the Census Bureau takes it very seriously. All the responses to this census are sealed for 72 years, and then after 72 years, your personal information will be released for genealogical research purposes. Next slide. So, this is kind of important. We don't ask for your social security number, we don't ask for your financial information, bank codes, passwords, anything like that. There are scammers out there that are sending out fake census forms through email and mail, and on the form, if it gets something in the mail or an email saying it's a census form, if it asks for any of this information, you know it's a scam, just throw it away. I worked at the state fair back in the fall for two days, I volunteered for a three-hour shift, and just during those six hours over those two days, you wouldn't believe the number of people we talked to that said, "Oh, I've already filled out the form and sent it in." I asked, "How can you do that? It's not even going to start until next March." And then I followed up and said, "Did they ask for your social security number?" And they said, "Yes." So, this is going on. Next slide, please. So, for the first time in the history of the census, people are going to be able to respond online. In every address that the Census Bureau has, we'll receive a postcard in the mail. It'll have a website on there, it'll have a code that's unique to that address, and it'll have a phone number. So, for those who do not have internet access, or don't know how to use computers, they can call the phone number and answer the 10 questions with a live person. It won't be any push one, push two, push three, it'll be a live census worker. The code matches up to the address, but if someone, let's say, they go to the library, they use the internet, and they forget their postcard with that code, they can still fill out their form and submit it. And we have tested this system, and we expect 90 to 95% of respondents will do so either by their phone or the internet. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, we are a non-political Department of Government, we're under the Department of Commerce. We are the data collection arm for all these different Departments of Government. Things like the quarterly labor statistics are collected by the Census Bureau, the agricultural census is collected by the Census Bureau. We collect over, data for over 100 surveys, and this 10-year census is only one of the things that we do. It's the biggest operation that the government does outside of war. Next slide, please. So, we're going to have a nationwide marketing campaign. The federal government has spent $500 million buying ads, and I've seen local ads that they've bought for the triad region, Winston-Salem, Greensboro, High Point, TV, radio, billboards, magazines, and it's expected that 99% of Americans will be reached through this campaign. The state is doing a marketing campaign, and we hope that Allegheny County will, through a complete count committee, will develop a local, some local strategies, cost-effective, many of which don't cost anything. Next slide, please. So, the key message is, we want to take, the community to take away is that the census is safe, it's confidential, your data is protected and private, we've never been hacked, successfully hacked, and you can go online with your phone, takes less, or computer takes less than 10 minutes. We also want people to apply for jobs. We're still hiring people to take the census in Allegheny County. So, if you know anybody who wants to make some good money for about eight weeks, they can go to the next slide, go to 2020census.gov/jobs. And the next slide has my contact information, next one actually, if you want to get in touch with me later.
Rich, one of the classifications you had on the first slide, I think, was poverty level, low income. Is that a question to ask, or is that just statistics?
It's just, lower income, people that earn lower amounts of money don't respond as well as, the more affluent you are, the more likely you are to respond, the less likely you are to respond, that's what I meant by that.
You asked that question on the survey?
No.
Okay. Statistical, then. This is only for citizens of the United States, correct?
No, it's for everyone that's here legally or illegally. Everybody is worth about, just a little less than $1,800 in federal taxes, so everybody, we don't count in the county, $1,800 you don't get back.
Do I have any more questions?
Chairman, may I, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Going back in Logan, it looks like the Board adopted a resolution back in September.
Yes, and I greatly appreciate that.
One of the conversations that Mr. Farmer and I have had is, is where do we go from here? And I know that you've met with several individuals in and around Allegheny, and don't know that there has been a complete count committee formed.
Correct.
That may be something that needs some attention. Mr. Farmer, I would ask if you could maybe comment on that?
Well, the census starts in four weeks. Even if, if we could get a complete count committee assembled, there's still things that can be done very quickly, like the fire, all of your volunteer fire departments, you could put up a banner about the census, that's what they've done in Winston-Salem, every fire station, all the volunteer fire departments in Davidson County are doing that. Some of the fire stations have marquees, and census data is important to the fire stations, so I think they understand the importance of it. Putting something in your water bill is another strategy. Having the Chamber of Commerce, I know that the lady I first started working with has, there's either a new Chamber of Commerce Director, or it's basically still vacant, I don't know, but it's important for the Chamber to get involved, to contact the businesses, and ask them to promote the census to their employees. Schools, is another strategy counties are using, to get the school superintendent to ask the principals to send something home with their, with their students to give to their parents about the census. Or they also have email chains, systems for letting people know about the school closures when it snows, that census message can be sent out that way as well. Announcements can be made at halftime of basketball game about the importance of the census to the school for funding, strategies such as that. And the population in Allegheny County is not that great. I think y'all could do a great job very quickly, just through simple strategies such as that.
Do you want to try to appoint the committee today, or does that need to be in two weeks? Or?
I sent Michael, Mr. Carter, a list of people that I've met with, and some of the others that I haven't met with, that might be good, just recommendations. I don't have that list with me here, but...
What I can do is, we can go back to it later in your meeting and readdress it.
I got a question. How are part-time residents, if they live six months here or six months there, where do they answer the census?
Yes, that's a great question, and in a mountain county, you've got a lot of vacation If they live six months here and six months somewhere else, it's wherever they live on census day that, that's where they're counted, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day.
So, it's where they are on the day that the census...
If it's six months and six months here and six months there, but if it's six months and a day, and that's where, that they stay in Florida, and, or seven months and four months, five months, where they stay the most. Same thing with the students, so you've got a student at Appalachian State, and they get counted at where they go to college. But even if a parent puts down their college student, we have ways of catching duplicates.
How's the military counting?
They're counted, if they're serving overseas, they're counted overseas through group quarters operation. Another thing that I'm going to have to have some help with, is due by the end of this month, is a spreadsheet where we list all your nursing homes, assisted living, your jail, anywhere you have institutional living, and RV parks, and hotels and motels, so that's going to be very important for the Winston-Salem office to get, so when they come, go to count people experiencing homelessness, and people who live in RV parks and move around, that kind of thing.
Chairman, I think another thought in this is if we get the message out across our faith-based community churches, all those leaders to kind of help the word.
Yeah, I agree, church is a good place to start.
Yes.
We will come back to this before the end of the meeting. Mr. Carter's going to get some names and information, and revisit this before the meeting's over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Chamber of Commerce Spotlight Business.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The Chamber of Commerce Spotlight Business this morning is Winterwood Farm, and they've been Chamber members since January of last year, and their venue is beautiful. If you haven't seen it, I recommend going to visit, the pictures do not do it justice. But Ms. Elizabeth Rup is here this morning to tell you all about her business. If you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Elizabeth Rup, co-owner of Winterwood Farm. It's a family-owned business, and almost two years ago, we decided to take our small Chews and Cut farm in a new direction. We wanted to expand Chews and Cut to include an event venue that would be operational year-round. After some serious business planning and investment, we opened the doors for events August 1st last year. As agritourism entrepreneurs, we invested in this community, fully realizing our more remote and local, excuse me, and rural location would be a challenge. Many years, we marketed Chews and Cut on the farm, and today, we continue to invest in marketing to bring people to our farm, and hopefully into the businesses and in the town and county as well. We began hosting weddings, celebrations, and events. It became apparent to us that our business might have significant impact on other businesses in the surrounding area. Some of our weddings are local couples, and many of our weddings are destination weddings, but all needed certain services. Caterers, bakers, florists, wedding coordinators, musicians, DJs, videographers, photographers, classic car rental, shuttle services... classic car rental, shuttle services, vacation rentals, hotels are just some of the services that would be needed by our guests. Some of the places that our guests traveled from in the fall of 2019, this is not all-inclusive, it's just the ones I made note of, were Australia, Paris, France, California, Canada, Seattle, Spokane, Washington, Washington DC, New York, Louisiana, Florida, New Jersey, Virginia, Florida, Idaho, Maryland and Ohio. We've compiled a list of local vendors that expressed interest in working with us that we give to our prospective couples. Hope to bring as many opportunities to the local business community as we can. Mentioned this to shed light on the possibilities. When visiting our farm, whether during Chews and Cut or for a wedding or other event, many of these travelers stayed somewhere, they ate somewhere, they shopped, they had a little fun somewhere, and maybe they will return to visit our area again. Hope that local businesses will embrace these new visitors to Winterwood Farm and our community, make them feel welcome and extend to them our best Sparta-Allegheny hospitality and mountain community pride. Often highlight to our couples the revitalization taking place in downtown Sparta right now and enthusiastically tell them how beautiful Sparta will be when the work on Main Street is soon completed. We hope local businesses will join us to make sure the visitors to our farm and our larger community have a memorable experience and one that they will enjoy enough to find a reason to return. Interested in working with local businesses, like I've said, if anyone would like to offer services for our events, we'd love for them to get in touch with us. We're happy to share the opportunity with them. We're planning an open house and as soon as the details are completed, that will be widely advertised and we hope you all can be there. And I'd like to end by saying that, um, thank you to the board for your interest and support in local businesses and, and having these chamber spotlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I'd certainly like to encourage everybody, if they haven't been out to see that, when they have their open house, to go take it in, it's, it's a beautiful place. Next up is Karen O'Leary, Cycle NC.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I'd like to announce that Cycle NC has chosen Sparta as their start location for the Mountains to Coast Bicycle Tour this year. We've been working with them since November of last year to organize this event and we're excited to host them for the first weekend in October. We hosted this event in two thousand and four and two thousand and fourteen, and it was a huge success and very profitable for our businesses. It brings about a thousand cyclists and their families from thirty-eight different states and they stay overnight in eight towns along the way. We've partnered with the superintendent in Allegheny High School to provide camping grounds and facilities for the riders. The official announcement was made last Tuesday in Raleigh, and I have a clip for you this morning. Um, the gentleman speaking at the beginning of the video is Whit Tuttle, and he attended the Blue Ridge Parkway Association Meeting of last, or in January, hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and the Allegheny Inn. Basically, he's, um, he's announcing all the towns where they're going to stay overnight. Um, and if you want to look at it, you can go to YouTube and just cite, or search Cycle NC and see the whole video. Um, we worked with Kate Irwin, we compiled, um, a section on Sparta and we filmed there, so I encourage you to go and watch it. Um, there's also a link to it on the Allegheny Chamber of Commerce Facebook page as well. But we're excited to host them. Um, they stay Friday night and Saturday night. They'll leave out Sunday morning by nine o'clock. Um, so they're going to be looking for things to do, they're going to want to go to the restaurants and shop, and we're going to try to have some live music and things for them to do, um, ways to enjoy our town, and hopefully they'll come back and visit us, um, after the ride is up. Does anyone have any questions?
They don't have a game, Karen.
It's the first weekend in October, uh, Friday the second, and then they leave out Sunday.
I believe it'd be possible to place that on the authentically Allegheny website and the county website, Mr. Chairman.
Agree. We'll get that put on there.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Next on the agenda is general business. Mr. Tom Kilby.
Chairman, if I may, uh, Mr. Kilby, if I stand, sir, I have had two back surgeries and a scar tissue's pressing on my sciatic nerve. If I stand, it's to relieve the pressure, please.
You're not going to be chasing me out of the room?
No.
Okay, I appreciate that.
No, I can assure you, I don't, I don't even, I don't even run to the reefer for a beer anymore.
You, you do what makes yourself comfortable. Um, good morning. Thank you for allowing us to come up here with, 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 to see you today. Penny Johnson-Britten is also with me, and we're with the Children's Center of Northwest North Carolina. Um, and I'm here to talk to you about teen court. First, before I go to there, let me share with you, and you probably already know this, but as of December first of last year, the juvenile age in North Carolina raised from sixteen to eighteen. Along with that, um, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council was giving a little additional monies to, for restorative justice programs to help meet the needs of the additional children that will be served. One of those programs are the teen court programs. Children's Center applied for money, we did get a little additional money that is good through this fiscal year, and the rest of the money will begin next year. What's in your pamphlet is, first of all, you have a map. That map is, is a map of North Carolina that serves, um, children through teen court programs. There's about sixty in North Carolina. If you look, most of them are in the eastern half of the state. Um, for that reason, I don't know, but it's been very successful there. Those in green are the counties that the Children's Center has received money to operate children's teen court program, or is it's going to be in Allegheny County, a tribunal program. The tribunal, the difference is, it's a smaller set number of people involved in it. That's the big difference. Um, the two in red are actually funded by different resources in county, I think county money or state or, uh, local monies. Um, the next thing on your, in your list is this, which is just the information about teen court. All the counties as in two thousand and twenty-one will be required to have diversionary restorative justice programs. Um, we are a diversionary, um, diversion program. Teen Court utilizes peer sentencing. Um, what that means is teen court is operated with volunteers ages fourteen to eighteen, uh, students that want to serve, that are interested in, in doing community service hours, interested in, in the legal system, maybe want to do that for a job down the future, something they could put on applications or college resumes. And we have a jury of children that come in fourteen to eighteen. We will have a prosecutor, we will have a defense attorney, we will have a clerk of court, and we'll have a bailiff. We will use volunteer judges to sit in to kind of see what's going on, oversee everything, make sure everything works like it's supposed to. Uh, for those children, we have a minimum of two hours of training and additional two hours if they want to serve with one of the prosecutors, defense attorneys or the other positions there. Um, youth that are eligible age eleven to, eleven to seventeen, that can be served. The purpose of juvenile court, or excuse me, of teen court is to serve those juveniles that are more appropriately served there than going into the court system. First-time offenders, young offenders, misdemeanor offenses. We do not serve felonies. We will not serve traffic offenses. The only drug offense that we will serve is simple possession of marijuana and dor paffernaya. We will serve some alcohol offenses, and we will not serve A-one assaults, assault, A-one assaults, um, more serious assault. The rest of the item, we can. I worked thirty-one years in juvenile justice system. Kids make young dumb mistakes. I did. So what do, what we will do with teen court is those kids an opportunity to be served there, and once they complete their sentence, so to speak, the, the case goes away. It's not something that's on their record can be used against them. Sanctions include, um, things like, uh, community service, letters of apology, offense-specific essays, um, the tribunal jury duty. Every child that goes through has to serve at least one time on the jury. Skill-building workshops, um, day, done-in-day projects and things like that. Um, the core components are listed there below, um, victim involvement, competency development, accountability, holding these children accountable, community, getting the community involved. Um, restorative justice also involves the community, um, positive peer pressure. Mr. Irwin said something about that when we, when we introduced ourselves, peer pressure. Children respond better, it's proven, it's about a four percent, um, rate that goes, that's involved back in the juvenile justice system again after going through this. Children respond better to peer pressure than they do adults telling them what to do. The children that they serve, that serve will have to be confidential. It's a huge part of it, is confidentiality. Everybody that's in the hearing at start, start of the night will have to be sworn to oath of confidentiality, and so will the jurors as they go. Um, we will also offer assessments if a child has a substance abuse, um, issue or charged, we'll do a substance abuse assessment and hopefully get them into an education program if that's what they need, or other services that shows up through our, our hearings. We're going to, we do it at night, one night a month, um, probably going to be on a, what night? We're not sure. I'll just go back to that, I don't put Penny on the spot. We're still working with clerk of court, sheriff's department and officers to determine what's the best night to, to operate. Um, what we hope to do is go into the courthouse, that lower-level courtroom, it's not used for much of anything else, in my understanding, that'd be ideal for us to use, um, to go in to do that. We're going to, we've asked the sheriff to provide us a deputy, to actually have a true deputy there, just in case. They'll be there more to observe, make sure everybody's, um, nobody's bringing weapons in or anything like that, like all courthouses do now. Um, but we're talking about two hours one night a month, from six to eight o'clock. Um, the next page is the type of offenses and sentencing that we'll do. Um, possession of type A offenses, possession of weapon on school property, not a firearm, but like a pocket knife, simple assault, um, communicating threats, possession of alcohol on school property, intoxication or disruptive school property, and cyberbullying. Um, mandatory sentences would be restitution if need be, jury duty at least one time, community service work sixteen to twenty hours. Twenty hours is the maximum of community service work that the juveniles can order for, for the, their juvenile counterparts. Anger management, substance abuse programs, mandatory. Also, we'll have options of letters of apology, essays and assessments for counseling. Type B offenses, possession of stolen property, less than two hundred dollars, property damage, less than two hundred dollars, um, shoplifting, um, false calls, emergency services or filing a false report. And you can see the mandatory sentences there also are similar, and on the back, the type C offenses are trespassing and a fray, a fray's just when two kids get in a fight at school or somewhere else, unauthorized use of a motor vehicle and disorderly conduct. Those are the type offenses we'll be serving. This page is the top reasons for teen court program in your community. Teen Court reduces the chance of repeat offenses, teaching defendants the legal consequences, provides juvenile defendants accept responsibility and a second chance before going to juvenile court. Teen Court allows defendants to serve on the jury for other defendants and be participating and serve in the process. Parents or guardians are involved in the entire process. One thing I didn't say, let me back up and say, for a child to go through the program, they have to accept responsibility. We're staying away from pleading guilty, but accept responsibility, and so does the parent, so they have to agree to participate. Um, Teen Court provides extensive individual attention for each defendant, allows young people opportunity to get involved in their community, helps youth develop better relationships with authority figures, lets juvenile defendants receive sentencing from their own peers, makes defendants accountable for their own actions, and it's a cost-effective way for a community to resolve juvenile delinquency. Last page is just more information for you to look at, it's at your, at your leisure or when you have time. More information about the Children's Center Northwest North Carolina. We used to be called Children's Center of Surry County, and we now are serving, um, seven different counties in Northwest North Carolina in some capacity or the other. And that's just a little more information there. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have, um, or Penny can if I can't, but we'll, we'll get you an answer if you have a question.
Very interesting program. It's, uh...
To be honest with you, it's brought me out of retirement. I've been retired since nineteen fifteen, twenty fifteen, and the opportunity came to work with this. Um, and it's something that I believe in and works. I believe in the juvenile justice system and giving kids second chances. Lord knows I had many of those, um, and I turned out okay, because that's what I think anyway, so, um, but it's...
Dare say a few of us probably had some of those.
And we're all the same, boo.
Yeah. So, um, so I think it's something I believe in. I think it's a good program, it's something that's relatively low cost to the, to the county, um, and I just think it's something that we need to consider and, and go with. Uh, right now, we've got clerk of court support, um, Mr. Evans is on the JCPC board and supported us, um, talked with the sheriff, he seems to be supportive, thinks it's a good option. The other thing is when an officer files a referral to us, because the child admits, admits to it, they don't have to come to court. We'll get a summary of what happened, we'll present it, and then we'll let the officer know what the results are. Now, if the child refuses, then the referral goes back to referral resource, be it the officer, be it juvenile justice, be it a principal, and then it's dealt with the normal way through juvenile justice.
Who do you think is involved in this?
We're hoping to serve ten between now and end of this fiscal year, but we're, we are estimating to serve somewhere around, um, ten to fifteen in a year, maybe twenty. It all depends on the numbers that we get referrals.
Yeah.
Right now, the juvenile, the juvenile justice caseloads are a little bit low, um, which is not a bad thing, it's just, it's a good thing. Uh, but with the, with the raise the age at some point, more numbers are going to start coming in. So we're hoping to serve at least ten up to twenty during the fiscal year.
Are the, are the, are the court meetings open?
Yes, they would be open. Yeah, when we have our first, we're hoping to have our first session in, in March, we'll let you know when the sessions are, are open and go, and up and running. You're welcome to come, sit in to see what it's all about. You'll be sworn to confidentiality just like anybody else will, if it comes to it.
Chairman, on that, on that confidentiality note, I do have a question. If there's a, if there's a breach, how is that handled? I mean, what is the process or the thinking behind that?
One thing that the, the child that breaches, it would not be allowed to participate in any longer, that, that would automatically happen. Um, it would just be, be then counsel with the child and the child's family on how important confidentiality is. It's not a violation of a statute or anything that they could be charged with.
Okay, so that basically they would just be not able to participate in the future?
In the future, yes.
Couple other pieces of information on that. North Carolina was one of the last states to, as I understand it, to raise the age?
The last.
Maybe there were two?
The very last.
Maybe behind New York was the second last?
New York was the second last, yes, sir.
And some of our, my colleagues here will appreciate this, one of the few mandates that we actually have gotten funding to come with this teen court, so, so you're not asking for, for funds for this at this time?
At this time, the only funds that would be requested by the county would be a county match that are, that is there for all JCPC programs. The JCPC funds that go into each county requires a twenty percent match, um, and most of the time the counties, a lot of the time the county's provided, I think Allegheny County has provided it for years and years. But also, the Children's Center puts in more than twenty percent match. We'll, we'll do an in-kind match of, of probably more like thirty percent on top of whatever the county, um, provides for us.
The funding we got for this, rest of this year to start this was like ninety-eight hundred dollars?
I think it was ninety-eight hundred dollars.
And in order to actually administer the program, you all are estimating that it's significantly more than that, uh, to, for this year, that, that you will be contributing to the cost of?
Yes, we, um, and I don't remember the exact dollars, I don't have the, the, in front of me, but, um, the Children's Center was going to put in much more than nine thousand dollars this year to get it up and running. We're trying to get ahead of the game before twenty-one, before the fiscal year next year, um, we just, because we believe in it and we think it's something that, that we can do right now.
As of right now, you're not asking for any money?
Sir, just more, this, I'm here for more for your edification than anything else, Mr. Irwin.
Only change in finances, our, our request will be at the budget request, and, and our typical match is, as he said, twenty percent, and I think the total increase for two years of, of, because of this raise the age was somewhere around eighteen thousand?
Something like that.
Um, and so twenty percent of that will be...
I'm thinking that the total JCPC were, in, coming into Allegheny County next year was somewhere around sixty-eight thousand.
Seventy was a number coming to mind.
Something like, sixty-eight something, maybe sixty-nine something with some change.
Just the twenty percent on the addition? Just the twenty percent on the additional?
That would be, the county would be asked to, to support with that for whoever gets the JCPC funded.
Right. That'll be a budget conversation that the committee's working through.
Thank you. When we have our first sessions, we'll be happy to let, let the county manager know or Drew know and invite you guys, or Mark will know through JCPC also.
Do you need approval for the location, use of the location? Do you need a motion on that, Mr.?
I would, I would think so.
Would make that motion if the board's okay with it, allowing them to use the lower courtroom at the courthouse based on
The only objection that I have to that, whenever I was speaking about moving, I was questioning some people about moving the PSAP into that same area. They said that we have a mold and mildew problem there. We're going to recommend that it goes to the bottom of the courthouse. I would recommend that we have a survey done on mold and mildew to make sure that we don't have any health hazards.
Can just jump in here. I would recommend not using the lower courtroom for any reason. It's not a safe environment for many reasons. If we have the upper courtroom available, if it's at night, why not let him use the real courtroom? Tried to use the lower courtroom for criminal court last week, could not get the recording mechanisms to work because of the dampness in the room. It's crowded, it's not a safe environment. The main courtroom, if, if they would consider using that, I think, unless there's some reason why you don't want that.
We would be happy to use the main courtroom. We were trying to be convenient to everything and, and use what is least intrusive. But if other, other counties were all gonna use the courtrooms in the courthouses, what we'll do is we'll make sure that people are not wandering around the courthouse. They're gonna go straight to the courtroom and they won't be allowed to, you know, to wander in the bottom halls or those places. That way, we can come in through the metal detector also.
And if you have a jury, there's not a jury box in that lower courtroom?
Couldn't remember if there was or not.
There's not a place for a jury to be.
Have you spoken with the clerk?
We have spoken with the clerk. She likes the idea of teen court. We have not made a final, she's not made a final decision on where for us to meet or anything like that. We did go down and look at the small courtroom. Been a lot of years since, since I've been in it.
All these are PM?
All, all these are PM, all, all the sessions will be in the evening. We'll, we'll be available from about four-thirty to, to accept folks that are coming in for it. And we'll be there from, the hearings will start promptly at six and be over at eight. If we're not over at eight, we'll continue to the next thing, just like real court does.
Well, I'll just change that to the main courtroom if, if you don't run into challenges from the, from the clerk or anyone else.
I'll second that one.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Don. Thank you. Any other questions rise?
Next is Karen Evans, Finance.
Good morning.
This morning, I am here to discuss commercial solid waste releases. These releases, in my twenty-plus years that I've been here, we have not had any commercial solid waste releases to clean up our books, so to speak. And when commercial solid waste got brought back into the finance office, this is one of the things that I quickly noticed and wanted to get our books as accurate as we possibly can. The date submitted, I provided everybody with, emailed it to everybody and also put a copy in everybody's mailbox. And the date submitted is only the date that we filled out the paperwork in our office, has nothing to do with the actual business itself. And for every single one that's listed on here, we have additional information and it goes into more detail. This is just a summarization that I had Sydney in our office to complete, and she is the one who is handling all of our commercial solid waste now in the finance office. So, as you can see, a lot of these businesses have been closed for a number of years. Also, there's mail that's been returned as undeliverable, and once it came back into the finance office, we mailed them again to, so we would have the information in the finance office that it was not a valid address. And I have worked trying to find valid addresses and mail still comes back. A couple of things you'll also note on here is like the large refund, or not a refund, excuse me, release amount for Roaring Gap Country Club. Some of these items also are where we brought it back into the finance office and finance was not aware that some of these are seasonal businesses, so we were billing them like normal. And then the business owner contacted us and explained, and then we verified it through Allegheny Garbage Service, like the number of pickups, dumpster size, and so on and so forth. So you will see a couple that's like that. And then the only other quick thing I see here is like the business, we had one business close in March and one in April, they're towards the bottom of the list, and those got billed as well, even though had, they had already closed. So is there any questions on any that's on this list?
Extinguished all avenues and checked everything out good there.
We don't know another way to go.
Do I have any questions?
I have no questions. We'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, hold on, favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you all. And this is something that, moving forward, if we have a, a release come up like this, I would like to ask the board if it would be okay for us to put it on the consent agenda, similar to the way Rita Miller does with the tax releases. And like I would be here to answer any questions on that, but still, it would be down under the consent agenda instead of at the top. Does that, is that okay with the board?
Objection, Mr. Chairman. Need a motion, do they? We're good.
Thank you all.
Next up is Megan Edwards.
Good morning. On Friday, I rode out to the fairgrounds to check on the water situation that we're talking about, piping the creek and clearing the trees at the fire training facility. There is actually a gentleman that has his pond runoff and it's coming directly out on our land. It's piped right under the fence and it is a bloody yucky mess out there. I believe Mr. Osborne can give a little more information. They're wanting to clear the trees about twenty to thirty feet from the, the Bloodso Creek running as is, so that there's some more area for parking and things like that for overflow, but getting this water situation cleaned up mainly.
That's, that's the biggest. We're talking about the side next to the house there, from the creek up to the house, that side of the property. There's overflow from the pond above and it's satisfied, it's running at least a two-inch pipe of water. And that's just coming out and getting out all of everything. What we wanna do is go from hook on to that overflow and pipe it over to the driveway, travel driveway, lower end of the property and down the fence line to the creek, to get that water out of the field there and, and back into the creek where it belongs. Happened would be a six-inch corrugated pipe, the cheaper, the cheaper kind of pipe, and it's a hundred and fifty dollars for a hundred-foot section. And I'm just guessing, hadn't really stepped that thing off, they set them seven, eight hundred feet. So you're looking at twelve, fifteen hundred dollars worth of piping, maintenance, I believe, can do the, with the backhoe and put that in place. Then the trees down, we, we need to leave a buffer thirty foot or so down the creek, down alongside the creek, but clean those trees out to where sunshine can get in there and dry that thing up. And at a later date, we could get some money maybe and so forth, turn that into a good parking facility for the fairground and, and fire training center, whatever there is, it's just that field all through there, used with the, with the fairgrounds. They could, they could, multiple uses there, parking
So big enough to fit a ball field?
This is true. There's, there's ten acres out there all the way.
Throwing that out there.
The only question that I have was parking recreation involved because that, that fire training facility should be under, it's a manager.
I don't think anybody's been using the field, the, what we're talking about cleaning up. And we do need to get them involved, of course, but I don't think anybody's been using the field out through there because it's
Unless they wanted to do the work, mud bog.
Right. It's just really wet and, and me and Bobby was just out there messing around one day and hadn't seen that overflow and, and explain all the reasons behind that, but it's coming out right there and just spreading out, so.
There is also a few pieces of metal and things like that, they're out there. So maybe on the fairgrounds cleanup day, when that gentleman comes to get the scrap metal, we could
Cleanup day, we're gonna look at that also.
Okay.
Get some corrugated pipe laying around the ground.
See some bigger stuff out there. This is, this is six inch, which is sort of a odd size and, and per ditch in one way to look. We'll certainly check and see if that can be used if we choose to do this.
Are you proposing to take that out of the parks and recreation monies?
Megan said she had a little bit of extra right there, something that we could use maybe right there.
You are aware that if you give up these funds, you're setting a precedent. Think in the future.
Fairgrounds maintenance and repairs, I believe, where we discussed it coming out of, that there is a little bit extra for this year in there. I have requested less for next year's budget, though.
You were gonna get less anyway.
Would you, Mr. Chairman, would you estimate it and kind of bring us, bring us a budget to approve? Or, I mean, I, do we have an amount or are we just?
We're not, we need to go out there and measure. I just wanna bring everybody up to speed shoulder and know where we's at.
You're, you're asking for no action at this time. We're just more or less cussing and discussing.
We'll get a solid number. We'll get a measurement done and, and
The only other thing that I'm concerned about is our maintenance department. Oh, that mule's getting loaded down pretty heavy.
He says he can do that. I talked, we talked about it and, and if we, if he can do it, our costs will be minimal, of course.
This may be a case where he's letting his bulldog mouth overload his puppy dog Fanny. There's only so many people in that department. And I don't know how many work orders are out there.
We will.
County manager, do you, can you, can you give us an idea of how many work orders are now outstanding?
Today, I could, but that hasn't been something that I've, the opportunity to look into at this point.
It'd be nice if the maintenance department could, could do it, but I don't wanna overload them with a lot of deferred maintenance going on anyway.
That is true. That is true. We will, we will, especially that, get a solid number and get it back on the agenda for next, in two weeks. And this project could be done this winter, early spring is, would be a good time to do that. Parents group, they like wood up there at the church.
Ring it up. Mr. Chairman, I may, it's, right now, it's all unusable land. The power company came through there, I guess it was back in the summertime, and they did the, ran their bush hogs through there for the power lines. But if you go out there and look, you know, I don't know if they got stuck or almost got stuck, but it's just, it's a swampy area. And in the past, there was one or two ditches that were piped to the creek, but over period of time, it's all the water that's got there is dislocated, all those, all those terracotta piping that was there, and the whole bottom is flooded.
Yes.
And if, if we can dry that up, maintenance has the small trackhoe which can be used to do that. You're looking at one or two people, I don't know if it would take a day or a day and a half, you know, to, for two people to do that job. That would be something up for Josh to, you know, he could comment on the time that he thinks that it would take. But it gives us that land to be used for something. And we gotta start drying it up as quickly as we can and as cheaply as we can and try to get some of those trees out of there. That will help dry it up some also in the future. And like you say, there's a lot of, I guess, over the period of time, people just dumped metal, old culverts. It's not a good, good situation, but some of that can be handled on the volunteers' day. It won't interfere at all with the fire department and whatever they do. But I think if we get into areas that get close to the fire department, we need somebody there that represents the fire department to tell us yay or nay, you know, on how that should be handled.
Yes, Daniel wrote, has been at a training, so I haven't had a chance to speak with him about it yet, 'cause I found out about it Friday morning is when I talked to Bill more in depth about it. So I haven't had a chance to brief Daniel or talk with him, even have a conversation. He's at a training. So when he gets back on Wednesday, I will get with him also and we'll get some numbers for the next meeting.
Chairman, please clarify something for me. This isn't the water that we're getting from the Maxwell property coming under the road, is it?
No. It's, we're talking about the property from the creek back up to the Armond Trout House.
Aren't we defeating our purpose if we don't address the problem right there? Because that's a wetlands too.
That's a bigger wetlands problem than what we got over there. We'll get to that a little bit later. This could be worked on easier for the time being. There is a creek comes under twenty-one from
We're taking the low hanging fruit.
From, from Maxwell's side. It's coming out there and doing the same thing, spreading out.
Several drainage issues at the fairgrounds.
I believe that Sol and Water asked that gentleman that gave a presentation to look at that and hopefully we can get some grant money.
It's a whole different ballgame on that side of the creek.
All right. Well, I was under the impression that it was the waters from coming under the road.
It's just a, that field out there for the left of the house is just some good, real good usable property and can be dried up fairly quickly, we think, be usable. I mean, of course, we gotta get some grant money for whatever we're gonna do, but we'll table that till next meeting and we'll get some solid numbers together and the footage and
I take it that you're gonna request grant money as reserve, as overflow parking for the
That can be used. There could, there could be some campsites put around there, around that property line, just like you did down on the fairground side. That's just a thought.
That's something that you all would like for me to look into for part of, 'cause we haven't decided on exactly something for this part of cycle. I'd be more than happy to get with Field True and come up the plan on using that for whatever you all decide, but if it is parking and camping, then that would be recreation outdoors.
It's certainly needed, especially during the fiddler's convention.
There's just multiple uses we could use out there.
Well, we've also gotta advertise and let people know that it's there.
The first object of the game is just to get that thing dried up and get that water controlled and, and get the water out of there. That's the objective right now. But we'll table this till month and solid numbers. But it's not gonna be a costly venture, I mean, to do, to get rid of the water.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to table until the mid-month, mid-March meeting, sir.
The piping part.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor, raise your right hand.
So, the bank has been sloped back. The dirt has been moved from Lions Club Bank down to the ball fields. That project has been completed. But now, we need to decide if we are going to go ahead and gravel where they took out. There's about twenty, twenty-five feet more of that entrance way, which is gonna be fantastic for Davis Field as far as getting traffic in and out. But do we need more dirt from that area before we put gravel? Because I would hate to spend the money to put gravel down and then turn around and need to be taking more dirt from it and defeat the purpose of putting the gravel down. So if we don't need more dirt anywhere from that area, then we can go ahead and put gravel down. It's about a six-inch lip, I would say, from asphalt to the dirt where they took the bank out, and we would be widening that entrance way. So estimated about twenty, twenty-five loads of gravel, could be less, but aiming high twenty-five loads of gravel to put there.
Dirt anywhere else? Are we done with the dirt or what?
We are for the ball fields. I didn't know if, I mean, if there is a mound of dirt out at the fairgrounds that we could use for that area to dry up, if we needed to use it for leveling. I don't know what it was there for, but I use it for leveling. I don't know what it was there for, but I noticed that when Josh and I went out and looked on Friday, that there is quite a large mound of dirt there, but-
When would we need to utilize the parking, for parking? Is it for parking? When would that, would we need to gravel it if we decide to?
If we have both fields going at the same time for Coach's Pitch, T-Ball, things like that, we will need that parking.
I'm saying, what month?
Timeline. Well, our baseball starts in April, so by April, I would say we would need something. Practice and stuff starts in March, but games will start in April.
My, my suggestion is that you and manager get together and look and talk with all the parties involved in maintenance and check with a suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. Last time I drove by, which I believe was Friday, that bank, you couldn't mow it.
He was working on Saturday. He finished Saturday sloping. Yes.
Okay.
I went up there Saturday afternoon and he had finished sloping it. He was there on Saturday morning when I was there for basketball games. So Saturday about, I believe, 2:30, he finished sloping the bank and-
The excess dirt, Mr. Chairman, I believe we could store it out at fairgrounds in anticipation of using it as fill.
Talk mentioned that about exchanging that dirt out out there. It's been dug out so much.
The more we take, the more parking we'll have. So I'm fine with taking the whole bank as far back as we can, because that's just more parking. But I don't want to put gravel down and then take more dirt and then have to replace the gravel that we've paid to put down.
You know what the slope on that bank is that they've done?
Two to one.
Two to one?
Matched it with what was there.
I haven't seen it either.
Matched it with what was left at the existing. And it had been mentioned, maybe rocking that instead of, so that there is no maintenance, there's no weed eating, there's no, because right now, as it was, you couldn't do a mower on it. It had to be weed eated.
Last time I drove by, there was no remediation to keep runoff. We're dumping mud down. You in danger of getting into air quality issues? My understanding, we flooded Jarrett Fieldhouse.
The culvert was stopped up, and I believe once the town and Josh and AJ, they all spent that whole morning unclogging the culvert. And then the water was running fine. It was, once they got it unclogged, it was like an overflow of water that went on to the-
Now, the question becomes, why did it get clogged? Was it from the runoff where we had been doing it?
From my understanding, it has been clogged for a time.
It's been clogged for several years, but now they've put bales of hay up there also. But once they got the drain unclogged, the water was able to go through the drain. It was full of, Josh said, a little bit of everything.
And there is a culvert out at the fairgrounds that we were planning on using up there before we got rid of it on the cleanup day that we can use for that entrance way where we're extending it. So that would be, the runoff could go there, and we could use that rather than just getting rid of it and be no additional cost to the county.
I, I think that, you know, this is something we may need to look at in the long term, what's going to be done with that dirt. There's umpteen truckloads still left up there.
Yes.
And like you said, if, if we put the gravel down now, and then six months from now, we decide we need more dirt someplace else, then basically we lose the gravel that we've already put down, because that's where all the trucks will be, the runoff will be on to that gravel. So I think, you know, we don't need to be in a hurry to make a mistake. We need to, to look at the possibilities. Do we need to move that dirt, some of it, to the fairgrounds? Is the school finished with all the dirt they're gonna need, just to be sure that we don't waste 15, 20 loads of gravel? That's a lot of money that we're putting into it.
There's, there's still ways to go back and move the dirt here from now. I mean, if we do the gravel, there's still ways to go back and get that excess dirt with a loader and stay off of your gravel area. I mean, there's equipment to do that with it.
Chairman, I'd add one thing. If nothing else, if, if the gravel is a concern, you put a steel fence up, and that helps along with some of your E and S issues that may or may not exist. But I don't know how that ties into Megan's timeline, because it sounds to me like you're gonna have to do a pretty quick analysis on where you need this dirt if she's got an April timeline. My thought would be that of us, and when I say us, I mean staff, an opportunity to assess whatever other needs there are, including providing a, a storage lot, which needs to be kept within a certain size as well, because you don't want to create a problem by remedying another one. You bring it back at your next meeting with a, with a, you know, some ideas and some recommendations on that.
Chairman, based on that, guidelines from the county manager, I would make the motion that we table the Lions Club dirt and bank until the first meeting in March, if you feel that'd be enough time, sir.
I'll second that. I just understand everyone's concern, but to be able to tell you where we can put more dirt at this point, I can't do that. I don't know if maybe if you do that-
Do you request more time, sir?
We can knock it out in two weeks.
Let's move, let's move that to the mid-month. He said he could knock it out.
I will modify my motion to table until the mid-month, mid-March meeting.
Got a motion and a second on the modified to the mid-month meeting to give us time to study this. Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I vote.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, general business. Fire tax discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may start off. The fire tax is something that we have been bringing up periodically over the last three years. Right now, we are confronted with a number of problems with our volunteer fire departments. One is the volunteers that are a requirement for a volunteer fire department. Recently, the state of North Carolina has reduced the number of certified firefighters for a fire department to have accreditation from 18 to 15. So we're able to do more with less, I guess, or the same with less. One of the problems that the volunteer fire departments have been running into, besides the number of volunteers, is funding. Now, our volunteer fire departments, every one of them, are doing periodic fundraisers. The cost of maintaining these volunteer fire departments has risen exponentially. They've been given breaks with the grants. Grants are limited, I believe, to $60,000, of which they have to pay out $15,000. And by referendum, Allegheny County reimburses them that $15,000, and they must submit the bills to us so that we will reimburse, so we know that they've actually paid it. Now, these volunteer fire departments, not only are they getting up, like January of 2017, whenever it was 17 degrees outside, at a house fire, going out and volunteering, putting their lives on the line to fight a fire in those conditions, they are also required to have 32 hours of training yearly. Think of that. That is eight workdays. They're doing it on the weekend. Their time, time away from their families. We are not even talking about the time that they are dedicating to fundraising. Just like every volunteer organization, you find that 10% are going to do 90% of the work. So they're out there and they are getting it done. Now, with the fire tax, whenever we first started talking about the fire tax, we made the statement, I made the statement, others have made the statement, that it was our intention to reduce penny for penny the property tax with the fire tax for each fire district. Unfortunately, December the 19th changed that. It's a date where the letter from the Secretary of Treasury, State of North Carolina, informed us that our reserve funds was reaching a dangerous level. So, I do not believe that we will be able to find the cuts and the increased revenue to make that promise come true. That is a fact. No, I hate to put ugly on the table, as I like to say it, but that is it. That is where we are. Now, let's look at what would happen to us if we lose a volunteer fire department. These volunteer fire departments, and recently, it has been in the paper that Sparta Allegheny is looking for volunteers, because they have an inspection next month. They know that they will not meet these guidelines. If they lose their certification, that does not mean that that volunteer fire department is going to go away. What it does mean is that the fire rating, their district, will go to 10, as if there was no volunteer fire department there. Now, they're still going to be there, but they're not going to be certified. They'll go out and they'll fight fires, but you're going to be paying the worst fire insurance rate available, according to what Daniel Rotten told us at our fire commission meeting that we called approximately two weeks back, a week ago, excuse me. So this is the reality of the situation that we're in. We have redrawn the fire districts to meet the guidelines stipulated by the Insurance Commission and guidelines by the state of North Carolina. Before, they simply drew straight lines. It didn't take into account property borders and things of this nature. Now we meet those guidelines. In the future, we are going to have, starting on the 9th of March, we will have public meetings concerning the fire districts at the respective fire department buildings. This will be the opportunity to, for the public to look at the fire districts and see where their property lines fall and answer questions. Now, we found out Friday that one of the steps that we have got to take is we have to have a report, which will be written by the High County Council on Government, stating the need for this. Now, in my naivete, looking at the guidelines in my book, it said that you had to have a report stating that the fire departments were necessary. Now, I figured that it was self-evident because the fire departments existed. All we're going to do is we are going to have a means of funding their operations. I forgot that common sense and the government guidelines seldom ever shake hands. So, we are going to go to the districts, we are going to have these meetings, and then there will be a countywide meeting so that the public can have their input before we can take the vote on the fire tax. Now, we are of, one of six counties, I believe I'm correct, county manager, that does not have a fire tax. Yes, people have asked me, are you going to tax this and then you're going to spend the money the way you want to? No, this is a dedicated tax. We collect for a fire tax. It has got to go to the fire departments. We can't divvy it up. It's not like a federal government with social security where they could dip into that large pot of money in the 60s and 70s and distribute it the way they want to. Every penny we raise in the fire tax is going to go to that volunteer fire department. Now, this will be based on a budget that they will be submitting to the county commissioners, and it will be part of the budget process. And we will look at the, we will look at their budget, and we will determine if it's within the possibilities of that fire district. If they come in and tell us they want airline toilet seats, we don't approve that. And that's the way your, your tax rate will be determined. So there will be oversight on this, and just because they come in with a budget doesn't mean that they're going to get it, because, let's face it, we're county commissioners, therefore we are political animals. We have been elected, so we are not going to do something that is going to put a burden on the public. Now, this is Johnny's way of explaining it, because I'm a simple-minded mud marine. This is the way I've got to, to put it in my mind. We will be answering questions. We know that there's going to be a lot of questions out there. I'm not saying that the fire tax is going to pass. I am saying that this is a reality, that if we are going to have a fire service in this county, this is what we've got to do and the way that we go, is taking some of the burden off of our volunteer fire departments, only for operation. Does this mean that we are going to fully fund? No. If they need a fire truck, they're going to be out there passing the boot, passing the hat. They're going to be doing fundraisers, because the, we simply cannot do this. Now, one of the things that has brought this on, and we canvassed all the volunteer fire departments last Monday, whenever we, we had an open discussion on this, the fire department said they wanted fire districts, individual fire districts, for this. One of the things that has participated, precipitated this, is when they have sent out fundraising letters, the response has been between 10 to 12%. So 10 to 12% of the population in those fire districts have been contributing in support. I'm saying about a fire tax, you own property, it'd be 100% participation. These men and women risk their lives every time they go to a fire. I've done a lot of stupid things in my life, and I admit it. I've jumped out of perfectly good airplanes, but I am not going to run into a burning building, I can assure you. I have the utmost respect for them. They give up their family time, they risk their lives, and I believe that the fire tax is the best way of supporting them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Irwin, do we have any further discussion? If not, we'll move on down to the rescue.
Rescue tax. Rescue squad is faced with the same difficulties as our volunteer fire departments. The only difference is they don't run into a burning building, and there's a lot of other differences also. Right now, we are funding the rescue squad through a donation through the county budget. Whenever I started speaking with the fire departments and also the rescue squad under the fire commission, one of the things that came up was that now the volun, the rescue squad, whenever they use supplies in performing their mission, they are having to purchase them. In the past, whenever Allegheny Memorial Hospital was there, they would be resupplied without a cost. The person that I was talking to stated that he was going to submit a budget this year of around $130,000, and that would be part of the reason for such a large increase. Now, last year, I believe, we gave them, whenever you deduct a one-time payment of $10,000, I believe the budget was around $37,000. So I took it at face value and looked at it, especially after we had redrawn the fire districts. And one of the capabilities that we have as county commissioners, we can form a rescue district. Instead of having five individual districts, we can make the borderline of Allegheny County the district for the rescue squad. Now, one penny would meet, would be in excess of their requirements. It would be about 75 cents per hundred. However, in doing my research, I went to EMS and I requested- However, in doing my research, I went to EMS and I requested some figures. 2019 EMS had 1,600 patient contact calls. Rescue squad had 61. Budget for supplies for EMS is $27,000. So there's a big discrepancy there. Now, why I haven't looked at the budget request, we will look at that, and whether we go with the rest, I recommend a rescue squad tax, is frankly, it is not looking good on my side. The other commissioners, that you have your feelings, and I will let you express them. One of the things that we must look at, though, and I'm going to put a shot across your bow, approximately three weeks ago, we had both ambulances out of the county. If Allegheny Health, whatever the name is, if they have to transport these patients, we have an 85-mile limit, which takes in Winston-Salem and Elkin. You want to go to Charlotte, you pay for it. One of the problems that we've had. So, right now, if the two ambulances that we have are out on a call transporting out of the county, the rescue squad is then put on standby. Part of the problem that the rescue squad has, a lot of their volunteers are employees with EMS. So if they're working, they can't go and man the rescue squad ambulance on a standby basis. Law Springs Volunteer Fire Department has now gone out, they have received a donation of an ambulance, they've done the training with their volunteer firefighters, they're certified. So now, as we sit here at this time, the rescue squad is on standby, Law Springs Volunteer Fire Department is put on standby also. So that if there is a call with the rescue squad and they are tied up, we have another source. So in the future, they are now trying to get their volunteers certified as rescue, so that we will have some backup. Well, in the future, we may not have one rescue squad, we could have two rescue squads. Now, however many we have, they are not a budget item in the Allegheny County budget. We do give them money now, but let's go with the worst-case situation. If the State of North Carolina said, you are not handling your budget properly, we've dropped under the so-called 8% guideline that we've been given, they come in and they take over our finances. This is discretionary spending. That money could go away, because they do not live in Allegheny County. They do not realize the impact that the volunteer fire departments and the rescue squads has in this little community. They're bureaucrats, heartless. Don't worry about it, and you aren't going to vote for them, because they got a lifetime job. You can't fire a government worker anymore. So this is a worst-case possibility. This is something that we need to discuss, we need to think about on the rescue tax. Now, am I saying that we're going to cut them out of the budget? No, we've got to support them, because they're doing their fundraisers, they have done a very good job, they have been very good stewards of their funds. They purchased last year, I believe it was last year, a new ambulance, a new rescue squad vehicle, wrote a check for a quarter of a million dollars. Debt-free, according to their Form 990, which is available online. So they've been good stewards, and they have not received a large amount of money from this county. Last year, we gave each volunteer fire department a minimum of $52,000. So they got the lesser amount, good stewards. We need to look at this so that we can also support them, because after all, they are a volunteer organization. So, this is something that the commissioners will have to vote on in the future. I cannot say that I will recommend or I will support a rescue tax at this time, but certainly believe everyone knows my feelings on the other tasks that isn't the subject of this discussion. Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir, for your indulgence, and I have nothing more.
Thank you, Commissioner Irwin. I'd just like to throw out there that the rescue tax and ambulances, we've got a lot to take into consideration there with changes in the hospital and so forth. And two, we still rely on the rescue squad, they run all the recs, PINs, we still rely on them, who sends to do that. I'd take in consideration there. Mr. Commissioner, we need to revisit the census at this time, is that suitable with everybody to take care of our appointment to the committee? Mr. Farmer, how many you recommend on this committee?
The people down the list are some of the key folks whose counterparts are on complete count committees in my other five counties, four counties, actually. There's two groups of people, ones that I've already met with and ones that I haven't had a chance to meet with yet. Veteran services, the key, social services, health department, senior services, all those hard-to-count populations.
Is there a maximum size you need, a committee, or what's your recommendation?
It could be any size that you want it to be. This is your committee, not the Census Bureau. It's who you think would be best to help get the word out to the community, to the maximum number of people here.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I would recommend to the committee that we have more than four members. They're not going to be taking any votes, are they, sir? It's just honcho in this. And looking at the ones that we've previously met with, haven't been asked, but I would recommend that we tender a invitation, join this committee, to Karen Edwards, who has daily access to the elderly. Nikki Scott with Allegheny Care, she has daily contact with the economically underserved. The Allegheny County Wilkes Community College representative, Susan Illo, which would have contact with the youth. And I believe we have now covered just about every field that is underrepresented. Am I not correct, sir? With the exception of veterans. However, this is deployed veterans. Veterans in the county are going to participate. We don't have that many, I doubt if we've got 20 active-duty service personnel from the county at this time.
Okay, let's get Donna in there.
I don't have a voice in the composition of the committee, just procedurally where you are. You had the presentation earlier, and it was on the agenda as just a presentation and not something requiring board action. So, I mean, I think it's perfectly fine to discuss what you want in the committee and the number of people you want in the committee, but as far as any vote, I think you probably need to table that until the next meeting, and that would also give you an opportunity to contact the people that you're suggesting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we table the, this until the March 3 meeting, I believe it's March 3, first meeting in March, and that we request that the county manager contact the above-mentioned organizations to see if they would participate.
We've got a motion, we hear a second.
Mr. Chairman, do we require a motion when there's no action required, to table something that's not actually up for consideration?
We're directing the county manager to perform.
I don't know that you need a motion to table something that's not on the agenda, but I do think it would be proper to say we want it on a certain next agenda.
I made a recommendation to table till mid-month meeting.
Yes.
Pick it up at the mid-month.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, I kind of disagree with the limitations of the size of the committee. I think the more we could do, the better the expansion and the ability, and they would have to reach its goal, which is my thoughts.
I think one thing you might want to look at is the public school system, through the superintendent's office, that, like you said, they can pass it down to the principals, and the school system is quite large when you take in the children, the families, the teachers, and that crowd. And, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, I agree with the recommendation that we expand, however, I would recommend that we consider putting a cap on it, because we've got a Fairgrounds Committee that the bylaws state that the committee can have 150. So if we don't put a limit on it, and we got 20, 25 people out there, they'll never have a quorum to do anything if they have a meeting.
And how many are on that committee that there's a limit of 150?
I believe that they formed that executive committee, and the last time I looked at it, I think it was 15. That's one reason why we went six months without having a meeting, we couldn't, we didn't have a quorum.
Let's check out, Ruthie Wood, who would be willing to serve, and we'll have that information by the next meeting, draw a committee from that. We'll have that till then, mid-month. Okay?
That's a short timeframe if they're going to kick it off on 1 April.
The postcards will be mailed, actually, in four weeks, mid-March, people will start responding, even though April 1 is that official census day, and the complete count committee can continue to reach out past March or even April, because there's going to be three additional mailings, reminders to folks in successive weeks beyond that. We're thinking that the census process will be over June 30.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We'll move on down to consent agenda, home water fund.
Chairman, I have no questions on the consent agenda.
Okay. Have a motion.
I'll move.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All favor, raise your right hand.
I would just add that there is a recommendation from them for solid waste release, is as presented, not to deny that release that was presented.
Deny the release?
That was a recommendation from the, on the forum, sir.
I just wanted to bring that up, that's the board's position to, as requested by the, recommended by the tax assessor, was to deny it.
And Ms. Rita Miller?
Recommendation is to deny this, based on, we had one back in 2019, was a very similar situation, and the board denied that one.
Full finger. Make a motion that we accept the, the agendas.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those, vote right around here.
And in my packet for this month, I also had for the license plate agency annual report. Go ahead and do the annual report. Okay, so.
We've already approved it, so I guess we better figure out what we approved.
This is just kind of an update. I wanted Cole Edwards, who is our license plate agency supervisor, just to give you an overview, since we've come through our first full year with the license plate office, and just do an overview and an annual report of where we stand. Cole?
What I've handed you is just a rundown of our calendar year 2019 overview. So, at the bottom of each column, I'll just go along left to right, what we collected total from this was 1.75 million, and of that, we were reimbursed from the state 35,000. And number of transactions we did for the entire year was just over 17,000. Notary fees that we collected was just over 9,000, so bringing our total compensation to 48,000. Average collected per month, and these averages do not include the month of January, because we were only open two days, average collection was just over 150,000. Our average audit score was 118 out of a possible 120. Average transactions per month was just under 1,600, and our average monthly compensation, including the reimbursement and the notary fees, was just over 4,000. Total errors for the year was 76, which is just under one-half of a percent error rate.
Is the mean error rate for the state, do you know?
No idea. I thought that was pretty good. Not arguing with you.
Would that audit score, or that error rate be reflected in that audit score?
Oh, the audit score and the error rate have nothing to do with.
Okay. I'm making the state a lot of money, ain't you?
A bit.
Too bad for us, don't look like it.
We like to say, just, this has come, very glad that it's in the tax office. Yeah, and it's been a.
Good service.
Well received. It's 1,571 trips to Elkin that we saved.
And we've actually had people come from outside the county, just because no wait time.
Thank you.
Then we'll move on down to county managers' comment.
Chairman, members of the board, you have an inspection report from the inspection office, page three. Bear your eyes yourself with that. Two other things I'd like to mention. One, heard a lot of knocking and banging and beating going on, and nobody's getting hurt, they're actually putting some flooring down in the tax office. So, we appreciate everybody's looks of surprise whenever those things happen. Second thing goes back to Commissioner Irwin, your question about work orders. And Drew, as she so often does, has taken care of that. Now, we've learned that there are about 30 work orders out at this time. I can't differentiate between buying or fixing or whatever, but we will dive into that and your understanding of that.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. County commissioner comments. Mr. Kibb.
Just a quick note, went to last Friday, February 7, myself, Commissioner Pence, and assistant county manager happened to be driving down the street and hovered at us. Anyway, it was a North Carolina Opportunity Now Summit. The executive branch and some, a lot of folks came and shared a lot of information, and... came and shared a lot of information, and one of the topics were economic development an opportunity, community revitalization panel discussion, understanding the federal opportunity zone guidance discussion, developing a 21st century workforce, entrepreneurship, and access to capital. And we look forward to, and Allegheny County is in one of these opportunities zones, there's 252 in North Carolina, tax incentives, breaks, and things. So, we need to try to gather some of that information, and try to promote that out, and hopefully, partnership with the outlets we have. But it was a, it was a good opportunity. One of the challenges we're having with employment being as it is, trying to get workforce trained and developed and plugged into jobs quickly, and shared a lot of ideas and things. And I know our community college is trying to work and streamline a lot of that as well. So, it was very interesting. And then, at the end of the day, our president made a few remarks, so just for that, summary of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens.
Just like to mention, Fairgrounds is having a volunteer day to clean up on February the 29th, and we've also extended it to March the 7th. So, anybody that wants to come and help clean up the Fairgrounds, you're more than welcome. Bring a chainsaw, bring a trash can, bring anything you want. We're just trying to spruce it up and get ready for the spring. That's all.
Just like to mention, the Allegheny Saltwater District is having their annual saltwater speech contest, February the 25th at 10:00 a.m. Be out at the Fairgrounds in Emerson Black Building. I'd like to encourage everybody that could, would, to come on out. Your friends.
Looking forward to the Ag Dinner tomorrow night. Great event, great recognition for the farmers.
Thank you, Commissioner Irwin.
I would like to remind everyone that early voting has begun. We have one of our own on the ballot, she needs to vote. So, I would encourage everyone to come out and to vote. It is a right that is denied by many people. If you don't exercise your right, you may lose it. The other thing that I have is dumping. An opportunity to drive the county manager around and point out some of the less remarkable views of Allegheny County. After a ride up Walnut Creek Branch Road, if is the proper terminology of the road, it does not present well. Really does. We keep on jumping up on soapboxes and say we need to bring in tourists. Let me tell you, if they get lost and find that daggone place, they are not going to have a good impression of Allegheny County. Very little that we can do, because dump site is on a farm. We can't touch farms. It looks like you'd have a little pride in your farm, your property, but God knows, can't take evil out of men's hearts, and apparently, we can't make them pretty up their landscape either. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to go into closed session.
Do have requests for closed sessions pursuant to the general statute 143-318.11.a- -3 legal, and 143/318.11.a/6 personnel.
Do invite the HR person to.
Need the HR person, April, AM, please. We will recess at this time.
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to your request.
Motion in a second, hold on, favor, raise your right hand.
With a five-minute delay for the...